By our PCSO chaplain, Joe Sumaga, right?
It's close enough, guys.
Okay.
Good morning.
Okay, good. If you can hold on, then we'll have a pledge that's led by Supervisor 30. Give him a chance to still be able to speak. So with that, those who would wish to join, please stand.
Happy New Year, Board. Loving heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we gather together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther to the best we can be. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Would you all join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin our County Board of Supervisors meeting. Before we open it up to the public for public comment, there's been a request by Supervisor Kavanaugh to request an appoint a privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the first time in a number of years, Mike Goodman is the chairman of the Pinal County Board of Supervisors. A citizen came to the podium about a week ago, two weeks ago, to express his support of our decision to make Mr. Goodman chairman and said it had been eight years since Mr. Goodman had last been chairman. A leader of any organization can't hide their values. Temperament, leadership skills, for better or worse, will be woven into the tapestry of the organization. Who the leader is will, in this case, impact the lives of half a million people now and untold numbers for generations to come, long after each and every one of us is dead and gone. Thirty years from now, people will see brass plaques on buildings with our names and wonder who we were. What they should know is that their lives were changed for the better because of things we did, because of leadership of the Board of Supervisors, who were impacted by a person whose vision was bigger than themselves, whose sight extended beyond this room, and who left a legacy intentionally. I am confident Mike Goodman, as chairman, can dig deep into the well of lessons taught to him by his father and his faith and do the right thing and live up to the name he inherited and truly be a good man. In honor of Mike Goodman's eight years as a Board of Supervisor member and this year as chairman, I have a gift for him. It is a glass cube, and it has a 3D image of his face, and it says, Chairman, Chairman, Board of Supervisors 2024.
I'm not sure what I'm... And that's a lot to live up to, too. Thank you. Reminds me a lot of my dad and the things that he always instilled in us to live up to our name. I haven't always done that, but I try regularly to be an example. With that being said, I'd like to just say a couple of things in regards to our county. It hasn't been eight years. I know you tried to extend it. It may seem like eight years. It might seem like a decade to some people, but it's actually only been seven. I'm in my eighth year now. But I would be remiss if I didn't express my gratitude to my fellow board members and especially those that have sat in this seat. You know, I sit here, not sitting on good shoulders, but standing on the shoulders of good men over the past few years and the efforts and the things that they've done. We've had some difficult times in our county, and these, and all board members, all five, all four of my colleagues have stepped up and did things. They've stretched, you know? They've pushed things to the limit with all of us and helped us to make our community and our counties better, our county in particular. So I'm Supervisor Miller, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I mean Supervisor McClure, difficult times, and Supervisor 30. And it's their chairmanship. I appreciate them and I love them, and I am grateful for their efforts and their time. So with that being said, I was hoping to cut this really short today as we have a short agenda. They were really kind to me whenever we did this, so I can get my feet back wet again. So right now, we'll open it up to the call to the public. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Pinal County Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decisions at a later date. And so with that being said, I will, I have two individuals that have fell out cards. If anybody else wishes to speak after these two individuals speak, just raise your hand in our knowledge and you can come forward. So with that, first of all, I've got Barry McCain. And if you, when you come to the podium, if you state your name and the general area where you live.
My name is Barry McCain, Maricopa. I concur with, we have the same thing at Lucas Air Force Base. I think it's great. I'm so proud for you being chairman. Let's start this. My name is Barry McCain from Maricopa. And good morning Supervisor Goodman for the Supervisors, staff and friends. Next week, we start the legislature again, and I'm really looking forward to working with you. Now, I'm going to be in education, veterans, maps, all over the place. I'm going to be also Arizona Corporation Commission. I'll stay away from Tucson this time, but I look forward to all the great things that we can do. We've got a lot of lawsuits already, and I want you to know that I'm going to be relying on you five and the staff to get me through this. We've got, definitely we're going to have to buy some water. We are going to have to do something about the education. So without education, we don't have, we don't have opportunity. So housing is something we have to work hard at. I can't believe what it costs to get a house now. So I look forward to it, and thank you again. Again, congratulations, Mr. Goodman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. George Aradondo, did I say that right, correct?
Aradondo.
Aradondo, okay, sorry. Well, I didn't know that. I had a football coach, Coach Aradondo, so.
Take out the glasses so I can see what I wrote. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is George Aradondo from Coolidge. I'd like to begin by committing Ms. Lewis, our county recorder, for all her efforts and due diligence she and her staff has been devoting to the upcoming election cycles. Her updates and leadership with the state, county, and local jurisdictions and community are very much appreciated. There are no doubts that there will be many challenges ahead of us, and collectively we must be tolerant and respectful of each other and the laws that we must abide by. We are governed by both the U.S. Constitution as well as the Arizona Constitution, including the laws that are derived from them. We may not like some of these laws, but Americans, we are bound by them until they are changed or challenged in courts. In either event, we must abide by the changed law or the court rulings. Our Constitution provides three branches of government in simplest of terms. The legislative branch makes the laws. The executive branch executes the laws, and the judicial branch interprets the laws and decides if they are unconstitutional or not. There's always been a process to effect changes to these laws, and it rests with the people, not just one person that is louder than any other, no one individual is above the law, and we, the people, affect the changes through our elected officials. As leaders of this county and we as leaders of our respective communities, we need to lead by example. We need to adhere to the rule of law, support our public servants, our volunteers, our communities, and given the opportunity here each other, I'm confident that there is more that we have in common than not. Let's be respectful when we agree to disagree. Let's not target our public servants or elected officials for doing their job. We must protect them at all costs, and I'm sure you would agree with that. Lastly, I have served in U.S. Navy Reserve for 22 years, visited over 15 countries and served three combat tours in Iraq and Afghanistan. I have stood in more ramp ceremonies than I can ever care to. Let's not let the sacrifice of our men and women to their country be in vain. Contrary to other beliefs, America is the greatest country in the world. I wish everyone a prosperous and happy new year, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Aradondo. Is there any others in the, from the public that would like to come and address the board? Mr. Noel or Mr. Rozell?
I'm Noel Reck from Eloy. First, welcome Supervisor Goodman to the chair. May you guide these meetings with a steady hand and protect call to the, call to the public speakers from personal attacks, which have happened all too often over the past year. Next, I'd like to thank Supervisor Miller for his reply to my concerns over the possible federal government shutdown and the implications for Pinal County. The information provided was very helpful to understand how Arizona spends its money and what might happen should a shutdown occur. Lastly, I want to wish everyone a happy, healthy, prosperous, and productive 2024. Here are just a few things I'd like to see in the new year. An averted government shutdown. Once again, I ask the board and all concerned citizens to call Representatives Biggs and Crane, who are spoiling for a shutdown, that Pinal County does not want a devastating shutdown in any way, shape, or form. Call, don't email, call. That comprehensive immigration reform finally be achieved. This issue has dragged on for decades. The finger pointing needs to stop and action be taken, particularly in regard to the dreamers who know only the United States as their home. That homeless people not be seen as scum, that they be helped to the basic necessities of life, their situations understood, particularly those who are hesitant to come in from the streets. That the Republican majority Arizona State Legislature put bills before Governor Hobbs that she can actually sign to make Arizona and Pinal County better. Perhaps bills introduced by Democrats can actually make it out of committees and onto the floor. That the election of 2024 be decided by voters who have researched the candidates and issues, voting with valid information and not something they heard on TV or saw on some phony site on the Internet. An understanding that no one is pro-abortion, that a woman's decision, her choice, should be hers and hers alone. And if nothing else, that Arizona should not be governed by an abortion law created back in the 1800s. That the Arizona fake slate of electors and those behind the embarrassing and costly cyber ninjas fiasco be held to account for their attempts to subvert the peaceful transfer of power by overturning the election results with what they knew to be false information and illegal actions. Similarly, that Donald Trump be held to account for his many activities and his voice be muted behind prison walls. That we never have to hear his ugly bitter words again, such as those holding him to account are vermin and migrants being pulled or pushed to the border are poisoning our blood. That type of Nazi-esque language should not be tolerated by any American, regardless of political party, and immediately be denounced. That peace be found in the Ukraine, the Gaza Strip, Sudan, and other conflicts around the world, and American efforts to bring that peace about not be hindered by political infighting. I have many, many more hopes, but three minutes, just three minutes. So in conclusion, I hope that whatever issues we deal with in this new year, the decisions be made based on solid information and analysis and not the most based in simplistic thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reck. Mr. Rozellis?
Congratulations on your assumption of office and happy new year to all of us. Yes, as the opening prayer invoked us, implored us, let's lead with joy and enthusiasm and truth. Three years ago, on January 6, 2021, you and I witnessed a day of infamy, the first time that a defeated American president attempted to retain power by violently seeking to prevent the constitutionally mandated transfer of presidential power. The violence played out while we sat in the room during a Board of Supervisors meeting. Yet here we are, three years later, as oath keepers and as citizens pledging allegiance to our flag, while some among us continue supporting the criminally indicted former president's campaign to regain the presidency from which he mounted his attempted insurrection against our flag and our Constitution. As we begin a new year, I earnestly propose we reach out to each other in a genuine attempt at reconciliation of our competing political parties, not to comfort ourselves, but to restore trust into our elections and our courts, for the future of our children and grandchildren as they assume responsibility of working peacefully towards a more perfect union. I've made several, perhaps feeble, but sincere private suggestions to leaders of Pinal County's political parties in this very room, proposing that we meet to find ways of bringing our feuding factions together. To date, unfortunately, those private invitations have been ignored. As we begin a new year of potentially cataclysmic impact on a democratic republic, I publicly again invite the leadership of our competing political parties to begin a series of civil dialogue to pull us back from a fear-infused political abyss that clearly faces us. As we approach the third anniversary of our unprecedented violent attack by a president against our nation's constitutionally mandated transfer of power, I encourage you, our county's elected leaders, to genuinely be oath keepers and actively lead Pinal County's political factions towards reconciliation. Your failure to timely exert leadership against these divisive forces will signal that it's time to support new leadership. January 6 can remain a day of infamy or become a day of renewed commitment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any others that would like to? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ruth Conrad. I live in Coolidge, and I just want to say to the Board of Supervisors, it doesn't bother me that there isn't more diversity on the board, because I believe that all of you can carry out your duty to us as citizens, and it doesn't matter what party that we belong to. I believe that you need to be honest in your dealings. I think you need to be honest in your discussions and do what is right for the people of Pinal County, because we all live here. I've lived in Arizona for 34 years. We're in a year that is going to show everybody what we're made of, and the eyes of the nation are going to be looking at Pinal County, because we happen to be in a state that could help decide who the next president is. But it's going to behoove all of us during this process to try to get along with one another, listen to each other, even if we have different opinions. Be kind enough and decent enough just to listen. I'm a recent retired educator, and I've tried my best to educate the students in Pinal County on how to get along with each other and share the gifts that we've all been given. And I'm asking you, as a Board of Supervisors in the county that I have chosen to live in, to do the same thing that I implore of my students.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any others? Mr. Wolf?
Happy New Year. Congratulations, Mr. Goodman, and the rest of the board. I'm here today, Douglas Wolf, as the Pinal County Assessor. I'm wearing that hat this morning, talking about exemptions. Every year for the months of January and February, people who are widows, widowers, disabled, or partially disabled, people can come in and apply for an exemption if they meet the income limits that are set every year by the state of Arizona through the Department of Revenue. So our offices in Santan and Casa Gran, Maricopa, and where else do we have? Oh, Passant Junction. People can come in and bring their tax returns and may qualify for pretty substantial property tax reduction. Just want to remind everybody that it's a short window, really. It's only two months so that they can get their applications in, and I'd appreciate everyone in the county trying to help us make sure people who are eligible for this do apply. Thank you very much, and again, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Is there any others for call to the public? Okay, we'll, we'll close our call to the public. We'll move on to the next item, which is our county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to call to your attention a few publications that have come out recently. One of them is our Explore Pinal County Visitors Guide that has a QR code on it. We'll be having these at airports, hotels, visitor centers, attractions, and it'll let people know what all there is to do and see here in Pinal County. We also have an update on our business profile for site selectors. GPEC will be using this as well, and it lets companies know why Pinal County is a great place to live, play, and start a business. And then we also were featured in the Japan Times, which is an English-language publication. There in Japan has 42,000 in print, 3 million online viewers. Us, as long as the state of Arizona and Arizona Commerce 30 were featured recently in their publication. So thank you to James Smith and the work that he's done on all of these. And then I also wanted to highlight and show a video, because Supervisors Goodman and McClure both mentioned this at the last meeting on the safety rodeo, but we wanted to be able to give the public a view of what that event was like. As, as everybody knows, this, even though it's a skills competition and it's great fun, it's serious as well when people are digging into the ground and they don't want to hit utility lines or communication lines. They got to be precise and skilled, so we'd love to show that video.
We're at the 30th Annual Pinal County Equipment Rodeo.
And what it is, is just a day for all these agencies to come out and show their talent and compete.
They're competing in several heavy equipment obstacle courses.
Yeah, courses set up for loaders, graders.
People really don't understand what goes into operating this heavy equipment out here. It's really an art, and in some cases, it's a lost art.
Kind of a fun day, too. You know, everybody meets new people and new employees get to meet new employees. It's a great competition. We've been doing it for 30 years, and it's something that we take pride in here in Pinal County.
I did okay. I did average. Probably did the best on the bucket, on placing the bucket, and I probably did the worst on the last fight, landing it.
I did tobacco just now. Basically, you just put the balls in the bucket, pick up the little weight. They've changed it a little bit, so it makes it more interesting this year. It's fun.
Bad. I got eliminated. And the bad thing is you got guys like the second guy in front of me, and he like aced it. And you thought, well, that's not bad. And then you get on there and you realize it's a lot harder than you think, a lot harder, and it's a blast.
We have our local agencies like Casa Gran, Coolidge, Queen Creek, Morana. And then we have some folks that came from very far, like Graham County. We have Yuma here. We also have Yabon Pie County.
They learn from other guys, other traits and other skills that other operators show out here, and they take it and they put it into their regular routine.
It's also a place for us to kind of coordinate with other counties and cities and work together. It's a great collaboration and it's a partnership.
It actually shows what we do in the field, what our guys are up against, what piece of equipment they run and what they're used for. You got to be on. You got to be on your toes. You got to be aware of your surroundings at all times.
This is important, because this is an event for our transportation unsung heroes. Oftentimes, they're the ones that the residents come across first, right? So they're the ones that they'll stop on the side of the road and ask, what's going on over here or what's happening? They provide a lot of coordination with citizens. This is the one time of year that all of the agencies in this profession get to get together, share ideas, work on competition. We get to share a meal together. It's nice to see folks in the industry all together in one location on one day.
Top Gun is Mario Rodriguez, Pinal County.
The Top Gun award goes to the participant who participates in all of the events, and they take their scores, their time, tally them up. He wins the overall prize. It's like the Super Bowl, you know? Super Bowl of heavy equipment.
Thank you, Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a lot of fun. There was three of us that was there, and to be able to see the competition and everything amongst all the different counties and cities was, and the camaraderie that was developed over that was pretty good. So, thank you. Okay, our next item is, where are we at? Oh, our Supervisor District Updates. Let's start with District 1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just got back from vacation. I don't have an update.
Supervisor McClure?
Just had fun over Christmas watching grandkids open presents and cleaning out closets. That's it.
Supervisor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I took the week between Christmas and New Year's to purge my office, so I'm back there. So I got a clean slate to start with. But I think the only thing I want to mention is, and I'll be at the opening legislative session for the State of the State address, it'll be happening on the 8th, and I'll be at that.
Okay. Supervisor 30?
Yeah, I want to announce again about January 8th, which is a Monday, starting at 7:00 till about 3:00. For the residents of Gold Canyon, there's going to be a community, you're going to be able to dump large items that can't ordinarily fit into the regular dumpster, and Republic Services has been kind enough to put out a large roll-off. It's at the community church, which used to be the grade school, so look forward to that. It's the first time we've done it. I hope it's not overwhelmed, but I do hope it gets full, too, so.
Well, thank you. And it's been my experience, when you, when you do these type of cleans, cleanups in the neighborhoods and in the community, you're going to, it's going to be, you're going to get a good turnout.
Okay.
Especially when you offer it for free. For District 2, we're going to be holding a cleanup on January 12th and 13th. I'm just putting that message out early. For the communities, we have the yard, the yard there on Hunt Highway that will be utilized. People can bring their garbage, couches, furniture, anything of that nature that they can bring to the yard there, and our staff will help unload it and, and put it into the dumpsters. They're going to be, we have multiples signage out that you can actually gather more of the information of what type of items that you can bring to dispose of. In addition to that, you know, with growing pains comes a lot of, a lot of frustration for people, especially when it comes to our roads and infrastructures that we're going through. And Santan Valley and that region down there is going through some extensive construction work when it comes to our roads and infrastructure. A lot of it is done by the developers that are, that are in that area. Schneff Road, for instance, Quell Run, that we've, that was shut down for a period of time while they were expanding the sewer system and things of that nature. And now Schneff Road, with all the improvements and everything going on there, especially on the corner of Acateo and Schneff Road, we've shut that down for four days, and there was a decision that was made because it was either four days of solid shutdown or 30 days of fighting with the traffic and everything. And it's less expensive for us to be able to do it in the timeframe that we're doing it as well, because we're putting a stoplight system in that area and making the interchange a lot better for the residents in those communities in that area right there. So hopefully, the public as a whole will be patient and understanding as we go forward with all of those road improvements that we're doing. Thank goodness that we got Meridian Road open at the time that we did, because there's a lot of traffic that's being redirected down that way. So keep that in mind. All right. Item number four, discussion approval, disapproval of the proclamation to designate the week of January 23rd, 2021. of January 23rd, 2024 through January 29th, 2024 as Medical Legal Death Investigator Professionals Week in Honor of the Public Service Provided by the Penile County Medical Examiner's Office. Is Andre or John here? If you could come forward and introduce this.
Good morning and Happy New Year. Chairman Goodman, Vice Chair McClure, members of the board, and County Manager Lou. My name is John Hu, Chief Medical Examiner of Penile County Medical Examiner's Office. I'm a longtime listener and a first-time speaker to this board for the meeting, so just bear with me. Standing behind me, well, this, come on on. Standing behind me are the employees of hard-working employee of Medical Examiner's Office who are working 24/7 to cover the Medical Examiner's Service. Well, the service requires responding to the scene. The scene could be a triple homicide, gruesome crime scene, or a motor vehicle crash on a busy highway during rush hour, or a hospital bed. And we often arrive in a vehicle that without flashing light or sirens, so we often arrive after the law enforcement or EMS. So that's why we're often being referred to as the last responder. Well, it's the last responders' work that oftentimes brings closure to grieving family and also put names on the unidentified body and also provide variable information to our justice system. So our profession has been long forgotten, ignored, not by this board, though, generally speaking. And so I want to jump to the occasion where, you know, we can draw some attention to the public for our profession, just to acknowledge the hard-working employees in our office, day in, day out, 24 hours, seven, 24 hours, seven days a week. Andre?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. My name is Andre Davis. I am the Investigation Supervisor with the Medical Examiner's Office. I wanted to thank you for this opportunity to recognize our staff, recognize our office. Not to hit on a point that Dr. Hu made here, but if you're unfamiliar with our position, our team of medical legal investigators serve as the eyes and ears of our forensic pathologist. They are responsible for triaging reports of deaths from law enforcement agencies, from medical centers that come into our office. They respond to the scenes to collect the necessary information needed for our pathologist to determine the cause and manner of death, and they do this 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, 366 this year, I believe. These duties are limited to, excuse me, include, but are not by far limited to obtaining the relevant facts, the circumstances, conducting research to locate and identify deceivants next of kin, and putting, excuse me, coordinating efforts that result in positive identification to previously unidentified individuals. As Dr. Hu mentioned, I think generally given the taboo nature of death in our society, often compared with the facts that their labor is often overshadowed by law enforcement, the community they serve is not always familiar with our activities and the work that these folks do on a day-to-day basis. So I do want to thank Senior Investigator Susie Dope, Investigator Sam Duncan, Investigator Courtney Copenhever-Astrum, Julio Rivera, Investigator Emily Vecchi, Investigator Bailey Seppel, Investigator Brianna McGinnis, and Investigator Jacoby Brox for your commitment, your professionalism, your resources, excuse me, resourcefulness, dependability, compassion, efficiency that you've shown to our office and that you continue to show to our community. Your work is valued and it is appreciated. And with that, in recognition of the service, I would respectfully request that the Board of Supervisors pass the declamation proclaiming the week of January 23rd through the 29th, 2024 as National Medical Legal Death Investigators Professional Week.
Thank you. Is there any comments or anything from the board members?
No, just thank you for your work that you do. We really appreciate it. As the last responders, you know, it's a great, great day.
Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your, this part of the county is one of those things that not many people know we even have. You're kind of in the shadows, for lack of a better word or description, and, but it's a very, very important part of the function of a county, and I don't know how you do it. I couldn't have that job for any reason, but thank you for all your dedicated service to Penile County and that department. Thank you.
Supervisor, Supervisor Sertie.
Are we still helping other counties?
We are, yes, sir. So we are, we do have an IGA in place with Heela County currently, Yuma County, we're working on with, one with T.O. Nation currently.
Thank you.
I've always been a big proponent of telling our story. You know, somebody else is if we don't, or it never gets told, anyway. And so I appreciate you presenting this to us and giving us an opportunity to vote this into action, so. With that being said, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item four, the proclamation to designate the week of January 23rd through January 29th, 2024 as Medical Legal Death Investigator Professionals Week in Honor of the Public Service Provided by the Penile County Medical Examiner's Office.
I would second that.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thumbs up, baby.
All right.
Oh, did we do a photo op? Can I just put my plaque up there and that'd be enough? My little mug?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Chairman and board members, before we come down, if we can get Andre to read the proclamation into the record.
All right, so the proclamation reads as follows. By the Penile County Board of Supervisors, proclamation, National Medical Legal Death Investigator Week, January 23rd through January 29th, 2024. Whereas the Penile County Medical Examiner's Office is an independent agency, serving the county's citizens and honoring the deceased of the county by investigating the facts and circumstances concerning deaths that have occurred within Penile County and neighboring counties. And whereas the Penile County Medical Examiner's Office currently employs the highest number of board-certified medical legal investigators in the state of Arizona, to ensure that every citizen is represented by a qualified and experienced medical legal death investigators who are able to perform knowledgeable, comprehensive, and compassionate investigations into deaths of our citizens and visitors. And whereas these professionals represent deceivants, their families, and communities to ensure that suspicious, violent, unintended, unexplained, and unexpected deaths occurring within their jurisdictions are investigated. And whereas the medical death investigators meet the needs of public health, as exemplified during the COVID-19 and opiate pandemics, in conjunction with their ever-changing fields of law enforcement and forensic science, impacts the American population in a wide range of settings. And whereas with emphasis on the ethical, qualified, independent, and thorough death investigations, medical legal death investigators have established themselves as an indispensable component of the public health and law enforcement systems, effectively speaking for those who can no longer speak for themselves. And now therefore, the Penile County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim January 23rd through January 29th, 2024 as National Medical Legal Death Investigator Week throughout Penile County, proclaim this third day of January 2024.
Thank you. Now, we can come down, Natasha, right?
Yes.
Come up front a little bit. Come in, come in. Miller, just a tiny bit. There you go. All right. Now we fit everybody. There you go. And looking here. And three, two, one, and stop by. Do one more. And three, two, one, and okay, this one's the happy one. Three, two. There we go. Thank you.
It's me. So, so thank you. And now, number, item number five, Discussion Approval Disapproval of Proclamation Recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Monday, January 15th, 2024. So Heidi, Heidi Miller, if you'll come forward and introduce this.
I'm here to request that we have a Penile County Martin Luther King Day recognition and support for participating in activities honoring Martin Luther King and holding him up as an example that is badly needed in our society today, an example of nonviolence, an example of respect for one another, an example of service to the community, and an example of belief and support of democracy. I am from Santan Valley, and we will be holding the Third Annual Martin Luther King Day Celebration at the Penile County Veteran Center. We have quite a few people in support of this that have been supporters of Martin Luther King Day activities. The inspiration for doing a Santan Valley Martin Luther King Day Celebration came from Ruth Conrad. It's from New Destiny, and they have done for, I believe, like eight to 10 years, a Martin Luther King Day Celebration in Coolidge. And the church, New Destiny, that she belongs to, organizes it and for the community in Santan Valley. Last year, we had the Second Annual Martin Luther King Day Celebration, and Mike Goodman came and spoke and supported it. We also have here Constance Jackson. She is the NAACP President for all of Penile County and has been supportive of Martin Luther King Day activities. We have Neil Carter, our state representative. He has spoken at all three of the Santan Valley Martin Luther King Day Celebrations. Well, he's spoken at the first two, and is scheduled to speak at the third one on January And we also have Pastor Millicent and Pastor John from the House of Transformation. They are sponsoring the event this year, and they sponsored it last year. And last but not least, we also have my son, who helps out with the computer stuff and things like that, William. So I'd like to give a few of the other people an opportunity to speak in support of this. And then I believe we've requested Mike Goodman to read the proclamation.
Okay. Constance, I think you wanted to speak, right?
Thank you, Goodman, Chairman Goodman, and the staff. I appreciate Board of Supervisors. This is really a spectacular day for Penile County to do this, because it's making history, and I appreciate it. And I want to thank Heidi for bringing this forward, and I've been friends for several years now, and when she told me, I'm like, go for it. But I appreciate all of you and all the citizens of Penile County. I've lived in Penile County since 2008 and have been president of Penile County NAACP since 2014, and hopefully will continue for the next two years, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from any of the board members? Okay. I'd like to thank Heidi particularly for bringing this forward and working with myself and doing this, and also with our staff, Natasha, helping to put this proclamation together. One thing I'd like to say about Dr. King is that he, he's a symbol for many good things in his life that he did, and had a peaceful things that he did. I'm not that young that I don't remember Martin Luther King and the efforts and the things that he did, and his ability to be able to spread peace while influencing others for change. May we all find the balance that he himself had in standing for what is right while respecting and loving, and that's been mentioned here a couple of times, loving and respecting the differences that we may have. We will all accomplish great things in doing and following in the example of Martin Luther King. And so with that, do we have a motion by any member of the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the proclamation recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Monday, January 15th, 2024.
Second?
We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. We're in. I don't, I'm not sure why they asked me to read this, but I'd be more than happy. By the Penile County Board of Supervisors proclamation, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, January 15th, 2024. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born on January 15th, 1929, and dedicated his life to promoting peace, freedom, equality, and justice for all through nonviolent means, and challenged all of us to participate in the never-ending work of building and sustaining the beloved communities. And whereas the civil rights movement of the 1960s has profoundly impacted the course of American history and continues to shape the direction and the debate of our society. And whereas Dr. King's teachings continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges and opportunities that arise in our diverse world. And whereas, in the resilience of Dr. King's message and shepherded, shepherded forward by his courageous leadership, Dr. King reminds us that everybody can be great because anybody can serve. You only need a half, you only need a heart full of grace, a soul generated by love, end of quote. May his strength live in each of us. His message continued to empower new generations of leaders, and his legacy inspires service to others. And whereas Martin Luther King Jr. Day, a federal holiday falling on the third Monday of every January, celebrates Dr. King's birth, honors his life and legacy, and raises awareness of the ongoing need to advance civil and human rights, and was enacted as a federal holiday in 1983, becoming the first federal holiday honoring an African, an African-American. Now therefore, the Penile County Board of Supervisors recognizes Monday, January 15th, 2024, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and calls upon the people of Penile County to join their fellow residents across the United States in observing this day with civic, community, and service programs in honor of his life and lasting legacy. Proclaim this- Proclaim this third day of January, twenty twenty-four. Can we get a picture with you guys? Is that okay?
Yes.
And here we go. And three, two, and again, three, two, one. One more, one really good one. Three, two. There we go. Thank you.
Okay. Item number six, Purchasing Division Report.
Good morning and Happy New Year. Chairman Goodman, members of the board, Angie Woods. I'm the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance, and today I have your Purchasing Division Report for January third, twenty twenty-four. First, the board is requested to approve the following contract awards. First, IFB two four oh three two eight for pavement maintenance materials. We recommend Wright Asphalt Products Company LLC to be awarded a contract beginning January third, twenty twenty-four, through August second, twenty twenty-four, with four one-year extensions. The contract is, will be used by Development Services Department, specifically the Public Works Division. RFP two four two nine two nine for property abatement services. We recommend Callahan Enterprises LLC to be awarded a contract beginning January third, twenty twenty-four, through January second, twenty twenty-five, with four optional one-year extensions. This contract is, will be used by Community Development Department within the Development Services Department. The board is requested to approve the following purchase requests per Penile County Procurement Code Section PC one dash three five oh governing competition impractical purchases over one hundred thousand dollars in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars with Magnus Works slash Ripple Works. The item that we would like to purchase is software for focused on individual and organizational peak performance and wellness designed specifically for law enforcement. This software will be used by our Sheriff's Department. The board is requested to approve the following cooperative purchases. Requisition one six nine three two nine with the supplier RDO Equipment Company in the amount of two million fifty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. We are purchasing a twenty twenty-three WorkGen CR three eighty. It's a recycling and soil stabilization equipment. Development Services Department, Public Works Division, and Fleet Services will be using that equipment. Requisition one six nine three eight six with the supplier Santan Ford in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirteen cents for three twenty twenty-four F four fifty chassis cab four by two, two oh five. Development Service Department, Public Works Division, and Fleet Services will be utilizing these vehicles. Requisition one six nine three nine four Goodman's Interior Structures in the amount of eight hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. This is for new offices and workstations for our Public Health Department. This is used by both fleet facilities and our public health. PO number two five one zero three five with Santan Ford in the amount of one million five hundred and eighty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-six cents. This is modifying or replacing items that were previously approved on, in October. We have changed the items to eighteen twenty twenty-four F one fifty Super Crew pickup trucks, replacing eighteen Tahos that the supplier cannot furnish for us. These vehicles will be utilized by our Sheriff's Office and our Fleet Services Department. Are there any questions?
Ms. Woods, Chairman, I have a question. So back, can you back a page up? And I asked this question yesterday, and you were kind enough to respond, but the Magnus Works and Ripple Works, could you explain that, people? Because that seems like a lot for software, but really what it does?
Certainly, and...
And how it's paid for?
Yes.
Because it's not tax dollars per se?
Certainly. It's a proactive habitat building application focused on individual and organizational peak performance and wellness designed specifically for law enforcement. The application addresses the following wellness domains: mental, emotional, resilience, relationships, financial, family, physical, leadership, occupational, and social and spiritual wellness domains. The program will be made available to all of our PCSO personnel, and it's refunded with special revenue funds, more specifically funded with our Smart and Safe Arizona Act funds. And if you have any further questions, I believe Chief Thomas is available.
Sure. Chief Thomas, could you, I know that smart, that was the, that's marijuana dollars, isn't it?
Correct.
Good morning, Supervisors, Chairman. Congratulations. Happy New Year. Matthew Thomas, Chief Deputy, Penile County Sheriff's Office. And what can I answer for you, sir?
Well, I don't know that you can really answer, but I, I saw your answer this morning.
Yes.
Thank you. But this program is to be proactive rather than reactive to the officers in need.
Proactive and interactive is the key point.
And interactive, because there's still the physical, there's still a physical presence of a counselor at some point.
Right. And, and so that's going to be kind of separate. This is going to be catered to the individual in the agency and interactive via mobile app, so they'll have the capability to go back and forth. And as it listed, it's, it's kind of holistic, so it's not just looking at mental health, it's looking at financial health, it's looking at spiritual health. So it's everything combined into one. And essentially, it breaks down to two hundred dollars per employee. And again, we're funding it from special revenue, so what everybody would know as the marijuana money, that's where we're funding it from, from that special revenue.
I just, thank you for the clarification. I just wanted, so that people see that, like, software, my gosh, what do you spend the money? Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussions in regards to Purchasing Division? Okay. With that, can we get a motion to approve or disapprove?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Purchasing Division Report as given.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? And it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. So I have one myself, part, item number B, that I'd like to have pulled. Is there any others amongst the board members? Anybody from the public? Mr. Rosales. Item number Q. Is there any others? So we just have item B and Q. Okay. Can we get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve items A through S, excluding B Bravo and Q Queen.
Okay, we have a motion to...
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Okay. Item number B is an item that I asked to be pulled because, wait a minute, where are my? Oh, there we go. It's right there in front of me. Is, this is my appointment for Karen Mooney to sit on the Planning and Zoning Commission to serve out the term due to a current vacancy that was made because the gentleman had to move. This term will be, from the service, will begin January fourth, and it will run twenty twenty-four, and will run through May for twenty twenty-five. Let me tell you, I've, I've worked with Karen over the years on a lot of different things. She's, she's been on the HOA Board at Santan Heights and has represented her community, the HOA there, in addition to a lot of the service and things that she's done throughout the community. She's a, a strong-willed individual, which is something that, and she, but she's very kind in the way she does things. She does things, even though there's a controversy between, she spends time and effort trying to understand the other side. And so I think she'll be a good asset, and I think at this time, she'd be the only woman on that commission that we have. And so we need a little, in my opinion, we need to spice it up a bit. And this young lady, she can, she has a way to think outside the box and look at things a little bit differently. And so with that, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to pull that and recognize her. So can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item B.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. All right, Karen, we have a, do we have a certificate for her? Oh. Can I get a picture with you? One more thing about planning and zoning, that's a time-consuming position. Every item that comes before the board, when it comes to any kind of zoning changes or any, any additional things when it comes to property rights and things of that nature, our, our overall plan for the entire county comes before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so it's very time-consuming, and so those people that serve on that, we appreciate them and the time and effort that they do. So thank you. Okay. Item number Q. Mr. Rosales, sorry. Mr. Ro, I, I have messed up, and it's Revellus, right? I, I apologize.
It's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I, I've known you for years, and I, and I apologize again, so.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you.
It's Roberto Revellus, resident of Sleepy Hollow Trail in Gold Canyon, and I asked that this be set aside for the moment because I think it's important that while the county is considering some traffic calming to resolve some of the issues that are being experienced on Sleepy Hollow Trail in Gold Canyon, that the Sheriff's Office ought to consider onsite law enforcement because the traffic, since the opening of Peralta Way, the controversial connecting gate issue, has at least doubled the traffic on an already overburdened Sleepy Hollow Trail, resulting in really increased endangerment of people like myself who continue to walk every other day a three-mile distance on Sleepy Hollow, and cyclists and other walkers with very aggressive and speeding of vehicular traffic. So I would urge that the Sheriff's Office consider using some of these new funds for onsite enforcement of the speed limits while awaiting the traffic calming resolutions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Otherwise, I support the funding that's being requested here.
Okay. Any other comments or in item number Q?
Just wondering if, do we want to hear from, I think Matt Thomas has left.
No, he's there. Guy in the beard.
Or, or Joe Ortiz, if they can weigh in on if any, if this can be used for any of that.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Matthew Thomas, Penile County Sheriff's Office Chief Deputy. Yes, the simple answer is yes, it can. That's what it's for, aggressive driving. And I know that area, and Mr. Revellus is not wrong, he's absolutely right. It has become one of our problem areas that we have tried to focus on. So I can assure Mr. Revellus and you all and the rest of the county that this money will be used not only for Sleepy Hollow, but around the, the entire county. We have what we call hotspots. Our traffic unit, motor unit, has a running tally of all the hotspots that come in, and we try and focus on those on a rotational basis. And sometimes we'll pay one area a little more attention than another when we have specific complaints, when they narrow it down for us, like timeframes, days, stuff like that. We're able to focus efforts a little bit more and concentrate on some of these areas a little bit more.
So this only pertains to aggressive driving, not aggressive parking? Because we have the cloud view area.
Yes.
Where the parking lot overflows.
We need some support from our federal partners, I think, to admit that the parking on the county side is due to the national forest on their side. Yes, no, but it doesn't apply to aggressive parking, unfortunately.
Any other discussion? With that, we'll have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item Q as presented.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Okay. And on to the next item. We will now recess the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting, and we'll convene into the district meetings, which is, our first one is, our, our first meeting is the Penile County Flood District Board of Directors, which is us. And so with that being said, is there anything on the items, any items that need to be pulled or discussed by anybody?
Singular, so.
Okay. And so with that, is there a motion moving forward then? Well, I should ask, anybody from the public want to pull it? Okay, we're good. All right. Any, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve Consent Item A of the Penile County Flood Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve consent item A of the Pinellas County Flood Control District Board of Directors.
Mr. Chair, a second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. We'll now close the Pinellas County Flood District, and we'll open up our Pinellas County Health Service District. All items, we have, what we have on the agenda is all consent items, any items that are indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or any member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. So with that being said, is there any items from the board that you would like to pull? Anything from the public? Okay, with that being said, do we have a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve items A through E on the consent agenda.
Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? And the ayes have it. Okay. We now will close the public health agenda, and now we'll move on, or, and now we'll move on back, we'll recess, we'll reconvene, there we go, our regular Board of Supervisors' meeting. So item number 10 is where we're at right now in the agenda. So.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Item number 10, and the same applies to items 11 and 12, relates to Serrano Solar. This was a case that you heard on September the 6th. Here's a PowerPoint to show what happened. What this, these items are intended to do is correct legal description that was incorrectly inserted with this. This is a description of the three cases. The correct should be 66 or so acres. Instead, the entire parcels were presented with the original legal description, and so all the other materials within your staff report and such were correct, as well as these exhibits here, which you see. Here is, that pink area is the intended area to be rezoned, and the surrounding above that and to the west is the entirety of those three parcels. And this shows the proposed facility, and as you may recall, there was, the bulk of this, kind of the iceberg, was in Pima County. So this represents the last part of the project. So staff would be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
We have any questions? Okay, with that, now we need to, right, thank you. We'll open up for public comments for items 10, 11, and 12, all three of them at the same time. Is there any public that would like to speak in regards to this? Seeing that there's none, do we have a motion moving forward then? I close the public comments, thank you. Now, do we have a motion from any of the board members?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 10 as presented. 10, yeah.
We need to take them individually, okay. Item, okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Item number 11. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 11 as presented.
We have a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Item number 12. Do we have a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 12 as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have that one. Okay, thank you. Item number 13. This is, not only, it's a public hearing, we'll open that up in a minute, but it's a discussion approval/disapproval of a case that was presented before us some, you know, not too long ago. So I think there, looking at this, there's been some adjustments. So I'll turn the time over to you, Patrick, and let you introduce it.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, members of the board, Patrick Roberts, Senior Planner, discussing case CSR 01023. I would clarify, this is a resubmital for the Maverick Corner Store signs, different from the previously heard CSR 00723. They have made revisions at the direction to the board and hope to seek approval at this point. So we'll go ahead and jump into it then. So this is a proposal for a comprehensive sign package to allow five signs with a total signage area of now 188.26 square feet on a commercial lot for a gas station and convenience store. The ruling sign ordinance restricts the total signage area of the site to 48 square feet for commercial complexes in this location. The subject site is on the northeast-ish corner of US Highway 60 and South Kings Ranch Road in Gold Canyon, Arizona. Current landowner and applicant is CPGC LLC and Maverick as well, Jana Ward representing. This is a county map showing the location of the proposed site in the Gold Canyon area. This is a vicinity map showing the surrounding zoning, an aerial map showing the site. The current zoning of the parcel and surrounding zoning is currently designated CB1. It also shows the notification boundary of the sites that should have received mail out.
Keeping that picture up, could you show which one of those blocks the Dairy Queen will be in?
Yes, that's going to be on the pink parcel to the northwest.
And that'll only have access from the 60, or will you be able to come in from behind?
I'd have to review that, but I believe Dairy Queen's proposing access, one ingress/egress here, and then shared access off of the Maverick site. This is a map showing the current locations proposed for signage, exhibits of their branding, an exhibit of their color palettes they'll be utilizing. This is an image of the monument sign they're proposing. And this next slide, so this has been reduced to 62.11 square feet, and they've also reduced the height by two feet to try and reduce impact. And this is a picture of the formal, former submittal, which shows at the full 12-foot Picture of the exit signage requested by staff. A picture of the building frontage, and details of said signage at 48.85 square feet. The east elevation and sign area of 14.37 square feet. A picture of the gas canopy, which has been revised to reflect a more muted color per the board's request. They've altered it to have a kind of off-tan color canopy with red lettering instead to minimize impact. And a picture of the former submittal in the bottom right. This is an image looking north on the site, south across the site, east towards the superstitions, and west towards the 60. So it's mine for board consideration. The current amount of signage permitted per business in this zoning with this commercial complex in consideration is 48 square feet of area. The applicant would like to provide 188.26 square feet of signage area. Monument signs are currently not permitted under the site conditions based on the existing sign code. For a monument sign to be installed here, a CSR is required. This applicant is currently undergoing site plan and formal review for this project with signage contingent upon approval of this case. Staff is recommending approval of CSR 01023 as presented with no stipulations. At this time, does the board have any questions of staff?
I appreciate that they have scaled back the sign, but I'm getting a lot of questions on light brightness throughout the whole night. This will be 24/7, correct?
The applicant can speak to that. The signage itself, nothing is stipulating that it has to be turned off at certain time. However, our lighting.
Not necessarily the sign, but just the whole property in general, because the area wants to be as dark sky as possible, and if there's a glow out there.
Yeah.
So all of their lights can be pointed down.
Yeah. To the SPR itself, that they are required after 10:00 PM to reduce lighting by 50% and reduce.
So they do reduce after 10:00. So that's, Gilbert looks like he's wanting to keep up.
Chair, as Chair Board members. Patrick, you've done a good job, thank you. In regards to this separate question on the site plan, our ordinance does limit the amount of lighting. We have what they call photometric plans, post and pre-photometric plans, that show the amount of light that's emitted from these. So yes, there is less light typically later at night, but they are under what's called the lighting zone 3, which allows commercial projects to essentially use the most light possible. But as you said, we require all lighting to be pointed down, shielded. We have a lot of tools in our toolbox in regards to protecting those around us when it comes to that. And we also recommend screen walls to protect the lights that come across the street. So to answer your question directly, our code does cover what you're asking, to try to keep it as dark sky as possible, as you mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Is the applicant here? Did you say?
The applicant's here and available to answer any questions.
Okay. Did any of you want to hear from the applicant in regards to what was, as far as the lighting? Supervisor Sertie?
I don't think so. I, like I said, I know that they've, they scaled it back, which.
Okay.
And obviously, they didn't need it as big as they did the first time, so.
Okay.
I'm glad that we did make them come back to the table.
Okay. Chairman? Yes, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. So I've had a couple of calls concerning ingress and egress and so on, but this hearing today is exclusively regarding signage, so I wanted to let those in the audience know, or maybe watching online, we're not dealing with, I'd issue today, we're only dealing with signage.
Thank you. We do have one card here for public, on the, because this is a public hearing, I'm going to open it up for public hearings, so, Mr. Coward, if you'd like to come forward.
Yes, thank you. I have some prepared remarks I'd like to share with you. Good morning. That's still morning. My name is Dave Coward. I'm the president of Gold Canyon Community, Inc., GCCZI, and we want to address this issue because we have seen the applicant reduce and modify their signage requirements, and although they are still noncompliant, we concur with the approval and their comprehensive sign request. The applicant and other service stations should be permitted to have signage comparable to the existing Circle K Shell Station on Mountain Brook and US 60. Representatives of this Maverick Station request have reached out to us, and we've had discussions of the efforts that are underway for Gold Canyon to become a designated dark sky community sanctioned by Dark Sky International. They have been very responsible, responsive to our inquiries about their impact to this effort, and have given assurance that they would help with this community effort. However, we recommend a stipulation should be added to the lighting approval to ensure that Maverick's project management's verbal commitment to reduce lighting pollution consistent with Gold Canyon Dark Sky Initiative should be part of the approval. This means that from sunset to dawn, the lighting will be significantly reduced, but it sounds like the regulations are handling that, so that's probably not an issue. Although we approve of this agenda item, there are issues associated with the entire proposal. The potential for a new Maverick Station proposed for the corner of Kings Ranch Road and US 60 is troubling to many residents of Gold Canyon. If I may comment on the larger elements of concern, let me outline our high-level traffic and safety concerns this business would generate. We have been, we have seen draft plans to handle the significant increase in traffic caused by this Maverick Station at this intersection. This will require ADOT to establish two left-turn lanes, which leads to questions, has this been approved by ADOT? Do they have the funds for this? A second right-hand receiving lane northbound on Kings Ranch Road from Walgreens to East Sunrise Drive is also necessary. Will these changes be paid for by the applicant or by the taxpayers? A solid median dividing north-south traffic is proposed to prevent crossover. Will this be paid by the applicant or the taxpayers? In addition to increased vehicle congestion, pedestrian safety is a major concern both to the intersection and at East Sunrise Sky. However, no date has been set for implementation of improvements to be made. When is this implementation plan for the pedestrian safety signal? And three, the most, the other items above are significant to the community. GCI recommends a community-wide meeting be held to discuss these issues, so we would require the request of the county to that, which we would be happy to facilitate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coward. As mentioned by Supervisor Kavanaugh, we're here basically, you know, strictly for the signage, but with the other things that'll be coming forward, I'm sure that all will be a part of the discussions moving forward. So, and I would assume the applicant would meet some of your expectations as well, with some community meetings and stuff like that, so. With that being said, do we have a motion at, well, first of all, I need to close the public hearing, thank you. And so with that, we've closed the public hearing, and now is there any further discussion by the board members here? With that, do we have a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item 13 as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? And it's unanimous. And you know what? Thank you to the Maverick family. I'm telling you, I've known them for years, and so, thank you. Good. You guys will enjoy it out there at Gold Canyon, I promise. Okay. Item number 14, discussion of board members' requests for future agenda items and reports to be presented at upcoming meetings. Is there any future items that any board member would like to see presented?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you.
Well, I had to look through you kindly to get to here.
So I'm going to ask for an agenda item for our next regular session, recognizing January as Child and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, and recognizing the efforts that go into that. And then a second item, discussing involvement of management staff in the counting of ballots at the elections office, and whether that's a wise idea.
Okay.
So that's the two things I'll have.
Okay. Any other things, items for discussion, for future items? So Leo, can you, or you and Natasha, when you guys put that stuff together? Okay, with that, I'm going to use the Galva one more time. We're adjourned.